I, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is delegations. Delegations is an opportunity for members of the town that would like to speak about any agenda item to come forward and do so. Does anybody want to speak about delegations, relative delegations? Seeing none, hearing none, move on to item D, new business, budget reviews. We have a request to move capital after the fire departments so that the people that are representing capital don't have to spend as much time here and they can be ready for work in the morning. So if I could get a motion to amend the agenda.
It's a motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll have a second.
All in favor say aye.
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 So be it. So item 724 will follow the fire departments 217 to 218. All right. First, department to review is 117, planning.
Gary, how'd you get so lucky? First on the block.
Before you start, Gary, Anna, could you just refresh maybe? I don't know about everybody else but me. The difference between adopted and amended?
So adopted is when budgets at referendums, that's how it was. And then the amended column would reflect, for example, transfers that we've done into various wage challenges, wage contingency accounts. Because it's, I mean, you all know what a challenge it is during budget season. So also, like, planning is a good example. You see, there's two columns with the percentages.
Yep.
And so the first one was based on the adopted budget and the second one is based on the amended budget. So you'll see the increases in the wages are more in line with what you would expect based on what's been burned.
Thanks.
And one other thing before you start. You said you wanted to describe to us what you put in the green folders today?
Yeah. So for their worksheet for both Niantic and Flanders Fire Department for their, I'm sorry, for their part-time firefighter and overtime accounts because those are the two accounts that give us the biggest challenge in terms of what ultimately gets expended versus what's budgeted. So not that, you know, it's just so that as we go along in the budget process, you have additional information to help you when making your reviews. In addition, the chief Ricks updated the salary account worksheets that were provided in your books for you to, you know, made a few changes. It actually will be a few thousand dollars less than what's currently in the proposed budget. There were also some worksheets on the contingency accounts going back to 63015. I just remember from prior years, there's always discussion of wanting to know how we've used the funds. So those will provide you with that information. And for, there's a CNRE schedule for when we talk about that later on the agenda. And then because we're discussing capital this evening, I put some schedule of acquisition payments on there that we can talk about when we get to the capital. And that's everything that's in the folders.
Any other questions before we get into the planning? Hearing none, you've got the floor.
Thank you. As you can see from the budget, there's not much change aside from salary that comprises most of this budget. You'll notice that GIS implementation has been zeroed, so there's no increase in there. We're maintaining the GIS maintenance of equipment. That's just to maintain the status quo in terms of our software maintenance agreements. Our GIS web hosting is wrapped up in that maintenance of equipment as well. The rest remains the same in terms of professional conventions, conferences, transportation allowance, printing, et cetera. In regards to the planning commission, they're wrapped up into this budget as well. I'll just note for them that they received eight applications since July 1st, 2018. And they ranged in sizes from 25-lot subdivisions to two- and five-lot subdivisions as well. They processed eight referrals, which included five text amendments and one zone change. There's two pending review. In terms of 8-24 referrals, the planning commission processed two. They processed also two requests for extensions. And my office individually processed three lot line revisions.
Gary, I apologize if we're not giving you our full attention.
Just. No problem.
Issue with the camera.
It's required to be updated by December of 2020. As such, the commission has appointed a POCD subcommittee along with two others, a walkability and climate adaptation sustainability. In addition, we had secured $50,000 grant from the Connecticut Institute for Resilience and Sustainability Grant in the near future for Darrell Pond. And that really wraps up kind of where planning's at in terms of my department and the commission. I think I've got both planning and wetlands to discuss here tonight. If you have questions for me, I'd be happy to answer any you may have.
I think you kind of lost me when you're going through the grants because I didn't see the grants listed here.
No, they're not listed. I'm just giving you a breakdown of what the commission and myself, my department, has been managing over the past year.
Oh, okay. Because one of the things that we look at, we've looked at over the past, is the revenue side for the departments that do actually have grants or licenses or permits, et cetera.
Sure.
It's good to see if you're trending up, down, or what's driving the revenue side.
Sure, sure. I think as of now, there's no grants that are outstanding, other than we're waiting for an award for that corridor study.
Okay.
So what is the $5,000 offset in revenue that's noted here? Is that a new grant or is that just a partial payment of an old grant?
$5,000 offset.
On the bottom of the page, right? On the first page, Gary?
Yeah.
Says revenue.
Says revenue $5,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is that?
It's the cover sheet. I think that's going to be based on, look at the revenue sheet. We estimated a total of $5,790 for the year end of 6302020. That's based on land use applications, GIS map fees, copies, and the state education fee.
Is there any way that your area can generate additional revenues by providing more services? Are there other towns that offer large-scale maps, for example, or?
I think there are other towns who do that. Again, I think the purchasing of maps has kind of gone by the wayside with the advent of digital PDFs. So they request a map, but if they're able to get it in a digital format and not have to pay the same cost as a printed map, that's their option. And that's, I think, what we're seeing there, is that they're able to request it via PDF or just print it out themselves from the GIS website at a scale that works for them.
Right.
And I think that's why we haven't sold many maps.
So what are the GIS fees that you do get? What, how are they generated?
Primarily through sale, map sales from.
From, so they come to the office and they say, can I get a copy of this map?
Yes, there'd be a request.
You print it and then there's a fee?
Correct. Typically, the fees that we do generate the most of is the request for data. So when they ask for digital data, that they have to purchase via a CD or USB thumb drive. And that's roughly about $150 for the several layers that we'll provide, which is parcels primarily, parcel layers, what everybody wants, roads and some infrastructure, things like that. They're all for sale, but I've only gotten one routine request annually from the same company, so.
I have a question too. Gary, I don't see it in your line item under intern where you have zero, but in your narrative, you discuss that you're requesting funds to support an intern. So let me understand, are you doing that by way of this budget or this is something you're thinking of for the future?
That was something I was looking to do with this budget. I, you know, in my discussions with the first selectmen going through the budget, that was zeroed out. It's a, this year, it's not feasible.
Okay. And the value of that would have been $10,000 is what you're?
It's what we're estimating for a summer intern.
For summer intern, okay.
Correct.
Okay. As a board, we just appropriated $800 to add to the part-time recording secretary account. And so that is, for this year, it was at 20, it would be at $2,500 with that additional $800. So you have budgeted $2,000. So do you think that's sufficient considering your request? I know, I know.
Yeah.
The case upon which, you know, the additional recording services were required, but looking forward, do you still think that 2,000 is sufficient?
Looking forward, I think the 2,000 will be sufficient. And that's making the assumption that we don't have, you know, an application that eats up 11 hours of public hearing and additional time.
Okay.
It's a risk.
Sure, okay. But it's reasonable is what you're saying.
But I think it's a reasonable risk.
Okay. Last question, on the grant that you mentioned, what's the value of that grant that you anticipate coming to you?
On the transportation corridor?
Yes.
Roughly $225,000.
Okay, all right. And is that, in terms of grants for a given fiscal year, where are you at with any of that? I mean, do you have multiple grants or it's only one or two a year or?
Typically, we try to write at least one a year. Usually, we're managing one to two a year.
Okay.
I guess for.
That's quite significant, a grant at that value.
Of that value, yes.
Yeah, it comes through the COG, right? It's the same one.
That's the COG, yeah.
And what they want to do is study the effects of Flanders Road from about Stop and Shop, let's say, right straight through, really, I think technically to the end of Main, to the Main Street, but we're focused up until East Paddinghansett Road. You know, it's the, really, one of two ways in and out of Niantic. And where that road pinches and we'll anticipate more traffic in the future with Costco and a new highway, on and off ramps. We're really focused on pedestrian and bike lanes through there, where the road pinches around the corner. And it's also a very dangerous corner, Swan Curve. We've lost some lives around that corner. So we do want the state to be, this is a way for the state to get it on their radar, is to do this corridor study first. And we were able, East Line was able to get that through the COG. We were competing against 10 other projects and we were one of two that were approved. So pretty happy of that success story.
That's good.
You know, we'll celebrate it a little louder when it comes to fruition.
But that's very good. What was that location again, I'm sorry, that you just spoke of?
From Stop and Shop through to East Paddinghansett Road, if not all the way down to Main Street.
Okay, thanks.
I'm all set, thanks. Thank you.
Did you have any more, Bill?
No, I'm all set.
Thanks.
I'm good.
Sorry, didn't even start on your job.
No.
No questions? Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
It's good to see we got somebody writing grants.
Yes, definitely.
Next one.
All right, 132, inland wetlands, well, that's your two, sorry.
Yeah, why don't we switch? Because the camera's not working. I get enough camera time and I'd like you all to be able to speak to the.
Unless you want to just.
On record.
All righty then, inland wetlands.
It's a relatively flat budget moving forward, aside from the PT clerical, the recording secretary for the commission, we've increased that to $2,000. Again, I came before and I've requested additional funds primarily for that one application that ate up quite a bit of time. Again, the budget's flat moving forward. Happy to answer any questions? If you have specifics of where the money's going or what we're doing with it?
I'm gonna start with John this time? Questions? No?
So that was going to be my question. The revenue is for what on this, Gary?
Again, I believe that's anticipated application fees, maps and other copies. That would be revenues that my department generates. The only revenues that they could generate would be from application fees or copies.
So that's what you estimated last year? That's what you got, kind of? Is that what you're telling me?
Approximately, yeah. We.
You seem uncertain, which is why I'm asking that.
Yes, we've approximately brought in.
Okay.
$5,000.
All right, that's all I have, thanks.
I don't know the exact number.
Okay.
Can we have questions?
We estimated this year $6,400.
Okay.
If I may, I'll just point out that the difference between what Gary is saying and what's represented on the department budget has to do with the fees that we collect for the state. Because the fees we collect for the state, we do not keep those. They, we remit those to the state at the end of every quarter. So they're not, this only represents the portion that's in the general fund.
That we get to keep.
Correct, yes.
Thanks.
I think we mentioned last year, if we could see revenue for all these departments that have revenue for a couple of years back, so we can see again trend data, that would help us kind of understand again if it's going up or down. It's clearly too late this year to change anything, but just as a future kind of thing. Okay, any other questions for 132?
You know, I do have some additional questions, so centering around the intern. What did you have in mind for that, Gary? Was it a college summer intern or?
That primarily, basically to do some fieldwork that probably wouldn't behoove town staff doing based on our salary rates. And a lot of that was going to be geared around going out with an electronic device and actually picking up field locations of, one, the hydrants and the stormwater outfalls. So rather than spending, you know, my salary, for me going to do that or the town engineer's salary to do that, the idea would that be that an intern could certainly do that at a reduced rate. But we're working out, I'm working with the town engineer on a plan on how to attack that issue and maybe using some, you know, some of the road crew, the town staff, if they're out of sight and they see an outfall, they can quickly grab it with their electronic device and maybe even get that work done without an intern if possible.
So this wouldn't just be a summer intern then? This could be year-round that you're looking for a few hours here and there, like a few hours per week?
It could turn into a year-round. My intention would be primarily the summer because that's when I'm going to get interns. I might get some seniors who have, you know, a project or something that they're looking to complete in order for their graduation. But as it stands now, I was just focused on an intern, a college intern primarily, just to have extra additional support from that perspective.
Are you aware of any grant money that might be able to help you out with that?
I am not aware of any at the moment. I'd be happy to look into it. I do have a working relationship with Eastern Connecticut State University, whereas they're the only state university that does not, or actually requires their students to, when they perform an internship, they don't get paid. In order to get their college credits, they can't receive a paycheck, so they hold to that policy, interestingly. So that works for me.
Works for us.
When they have students, right. So we've been trying to, you know, as they have students come up and that live locally, transportation seems to be their biggest hurdle of getting here to do the work, so. But we have a nice working relationship with the university, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for inland wetlands? Hearing none, thank you. We will move on to zoning. 116. 86.
Hello.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Matt Walker, Chairman of the East Line Zoning Commission. I just wanted to read into the record to begin with the East Line Zoning Commission annual report and then either myself or Mr. Maholand, any questions you have in regards to the budget. Charged by the Connecticut Legislature to develop and administer the community's comprehensive zoning plan, the East Line Zoning Commission adopts, administers, and enforces regulations which are designed to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. Though a separate entity, the zoning department is considered an integral part of the commission to which it reports. The zoning department is responsible for the administration, interpretation, and enforcement of the zoning regulations. The department acts in an advisory capacity to the commission and to the general public, providing technical knowledge on a variety of zoning topics to both parties. The zoning department is available on a daily basis to answer general technical land use questions. In addition, the department also receives, reviews, and processes all commercial, industrial, multifamily, and single-family residential development applications. The zoning department, on behalf of the commission, also functions as the town's central development office. In this capacity, the zoning department operates as the primary contact point for parties interested in commercial, industrial, affordable, and multifamily development in the community, providing both information and guidance through the regulatory process. As in previous years, the department staff continues to work closely with developers to ensure a responsible approach to architectural and landscaping design. These efforts are evident in many of the new commercial buildings in our community, such as the new retail building on Main Street for Village Wines, the new bread shed at Whitegate Farm, the nine-unit condominiums on Methodist Street, and the new Shell gas station in the Flanders section of town. The zoning commission also approved a mixed-use building on Boston Post Road, as well as town projects such as the Cheney Park Restrooms and the new park in downtown Niantic. In addition, the zoning office is responsible for the administration and enforcement of the town's flood hazard and coastal management regulations. While extremely busy, the staff continues its efforts to enhance services to the public. During this reporting period, the following activities occur. Permits reviewed and approved by the zoning department. They are: single-family dwellings, 18; single-family additions/alterations, 243; commercial/light industrial additions/alterations, 19; miscellaneous permits, which would include pools, accessory building signs, and other, 217; new commercial, six; mechanicals, 478. Total number of zoning permits issued during this period was 275. A total estimated value was approximately $21,251,000 and change. In addition, the zoning office processed 175-plus zoning complaints during the year. The zoning commission held numerous regularly scheduled and special meetings over the course of the reporting period. The commission reviewed the following applications and concerns during the monthly meetings. Special permits, 17; regulation amendments, 7; zoning changes, 1; no affordable housing proposals this year, interestingly; coastal area site plan, 7; site plan, 7; and regulation waivers, 8. Further, the zoning commission has been designated as East Line's Aquifer Protection Agency. Aquifer Protection is a state-mandated program that is designed to protect major public water supply wells and gravel aquifers to ensure a plentiful supply of public drinking water for present and future generations. This program's responsibilities are shared by the state DEEP, the municipalities, and the water companies. Municipalities play the most critical role. We are responsible for appointing an Aquifer Protection Agency, that is us, the zoning commission, inventorying land uses within the Aquifer Protection Area, designated the Aquifer Protection Area boundary, and adopting and implementing local land use restrictions. The agency regulates land use activities within the Aquifer Protection Area by registering existing regulated activities, that's a big part of what we do, issuing certificates for new regulated activities, and overseeing regulated facilities. To date, we monitor 29 businesses and regulate 12. All have been inspected and registered. Others were not registered because they did not meet regulatory thresholds or were/are regulated by DEEP. The Aquifer Protection Agency meets bimonthly and is staffed by Mr. Maholand, our zoning official, who is certified by the state DEEP as an Aquifer Protection Agent. He's responsible for overseeing this program and inspecting facilities. I also note that currently this is an unfunded board with no budget. In addition, I also note while not a function of the zoning commission or Aquifer Protection Agency, Mr. Maholand also administers and enforces the town's adopted light prevention program. As Chairman of the commission, I express my appreciation to the zoning commission for its faithful service to the town of East Line on this important and often controversial commission. I also extend my sincerest appreciation to our agent and zoning official, Mr. Maholand, seated next to me. His zoning and planning expertise, professionalism, and courtesy to those he serves, and his long-dedicated service to this town is a huge asset. Through the work he does alongside with the commission members, he is dramatically improving the ambiance, character, style, and pride of East Line. In addition, I'd like to express my appreciation to the administrative assistant, Jennifer Linda Dashna, and administrative assistant Karen Sumitrick for their dedication and support, as well as Brooke Stevens, who records the minutes for our zoning commission meetings so diligently and accurately every other week. And with that, we'll take any questions that you may have in regards to budget.
Regarding our budget, you would say that it's essentially similar and the same as we have after several years, the exception of salaries, which have led to the discretion of board finance and the board selectmen. Other than that, we consider it a very frugal budget. Our revenues for this year are up, and that's due to the commercial activity. I think we're all well aware of the Costcos and other things that are going on. We had essentially projected a small number, about $27,000, we're at about $46,000. So for us, that's a good year. We've been averaging roughly 50. We're projecting low for next year, obviously subject to market forces. We are anticipating more activity with the gateway development. We're not sure if they're going to make the deals or not, but if they do, then we should have a higher revenue stream next year. And certainly, some of those developments will come online for tax purposes, so you will have to have, we'll have each tax revenue over the wall from Costco and from the additional 120 units that we are anticipating that they will begin construction soon. You know, pre-report on Costco, they are, they are making great headway. They're almost ready with the pad. I'd say they're three quarters of the way. Massive site, therefore, I think they're going to start active. The current limits making doing the construction is anticipated, also built 120 units that they've also been given. So those two should come online this year, it's anticipated, Costco early November, December. The 120 units will follow as they are constructed. And I'm anticipating how the state does and how soon they're able to initiate their rego of the exchange and then to show that the rest of the development will follow. Well, it's not a live conversation, so I'm trying to get it here so that Mike will follow as well.
Can you repeat those two numbers for planned revenue? Your actual was 46, your plan was?
Forty-six, and I believe the, you get that back to that page, was, plan was 27, we're at 46 and change.
And?
The trend is upward, but it's obviously subject to market forces.
And in the report, it said the total on page, I don't know what this is, two, of the report, you say total estimated value was approximately $21,251,054.91. I don't know that that's approximate, but that's okay. That's the actual grand list increase of the above?
That's the increase of what we've looked at and processed.
But that's the value of the grand list increase?
Essentially, for our purposes, it may be what I've looked at for zoning purposes. There are some building permits that I might not see that might increase that, and by how much, I don't know.
Thank you. Okay, question?
Just to clarify, because I had the same question as Bill, the $21 million, we will see an increase at the October 1st grand list? October 1st, 2019?
That's a special question, right?
Yes, essentially, it's more of an essential question. That's the value of what we looked at.
For the count, for the fiscal year?
That's correct.
1819.
If we had that value over the wall, so that's what we're seeing.
So then my question, Anna, would be, I think one of the questions that I asked you is my desire to see the revenues broken down in the tax revenues as to what's a result of new building in town? So that 21, I think, would be included in?
But that's not, so the grand list that was just completed for 10-1-18, that's the grand list that we're using for?
Which may or may not include some of this 21 million.
Correct. I believe what Mr. Maholand is referring to would be the next grand list, which will be 10-1-19.
Right, so.
That will be for the following year's budget.
Right, but we're working on the following year's budget.
No.
So for the 10, for the 7-1-19 budget, we're going to use the 10-1-18 grand list. The numbers that Mr. Maholand is bringing up will be on the 10-1-19 grand list, so that will be for the budget for 7-1-20.
This time next year?
Not all of it, though. This, right, there is a portion that might be included in the October 1st, 2018 grand list of the 21 million. If this. If this was in effect as of July 1st, 2018, then some of those, some of that, that value would be included in the October 1st 18.
Well, I'd have to know what the projects are to look them up.
But, but that's the kind of information that I'm looking at from all of the activity that is new, that got recorded in the October 1st grand list.
Well, so, so when I looked at the increase in the grand list from, you know, for 10-1-18, the additional tax revenues would be about $475,000. And that's just based on the grand list growth, but not, I'm not, like, honing in on, like, what the specific items are, I just looked at the bottom-line increase.
Okay, so the grand list growth is a result of, there was no revaluation?
No.
So all of that is then attributable to new activity?
Or someone redoing their home, upgrades of homes, a lot of knockdown, tear-downs along the coast?
Yeah.
You know? Lots of that. People putting in docks.
So from the, from the zoning board, anything that was approved in July, August, September impact could have impacted the grand list? Anything after September wouldn't impact the grand list? So about a quarter of that could potentially hit the grand list. Other questions?
I'm sure I'll have more questions on that, I'm still just a little fuzzy, but when we get to it.
The Cessna's coming in in a night or two, a meeting or two, so definitely we can focus on it.
Thank you.
Other zoning questions?
Yes, I don't, I haven't.
Anna, can you tell us what the difference is, and this is a good budget for that, for adopted and amended, on the line 211? Why did that number go up?
What do you mean, like, why is adopted 4.29%?
No, I know, I understand the calc.
Okay.
The adopted budget was 95093, the amended budget was 96958.
So you want to know why the amended budget would have?
Yeah, that's a...
Okay, so that, that has to do with the general wage increase? So for the 2007, 17, no, for the 2018-19 budget year, the general wage increase wasn't approved until after we went through the budget process.
Okay.
So that's when we put the funds in the contingency account?
Right.
And then at the meetings in February, we requested transferring the funds into all the different accounts.
All right, so that's true in every budget for every department head?
For, yes, for the, for the, for the non-affiliated, yes.
Okay.
So that, it's for non-affiliated and the UPSU employees and the firefighters. I think the dispatchers for, their contract was already in place, and then the other one is the police. We have just recently reached a tentative agreement with them, so it's kind of in the works of getting approved by the police. They need to ratify it, and then the Board of Selectmen will ratify it. So it's up for debate as to whether or not we'll have that information soon enough to get it in the budget before it gets adopted. So they're the ones that, they're the ones that it won't be there.
All right, the transportation allowance, so I see in 18, that was $214. It's not a big number, I just want to understand the basis for it. It's mileage incurred, I guess, right? And so that would be at the rate of 58 cents a mile? Is that the state?
That's something like that.